Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the blessings and opportunities it has brought us. Thank you for the abundance of blessings you have bestowed upon this great city. Father, we pray that you would continue to bless our city, bless every resident who resides within its boundaries, and every employee who works to make it great. Bless the children in our city, protect them, and keep them safe from harm. Bless this council and our city manager as we labor in the calling of public service. Give us wisdom, compassion, and love as we serve your people, and let all we do glorify you. Lastly, bless those who are, who have little or are without nothing. May you surround them with your comfort and with your love and give them your peace. These and all other blessings we ask in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. The clerk will please call the roll.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to excuse Mr. Win, please.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. We're glad to have you here. Thank you for coming out tonight. For those of you who do not regularly attend our council session, the process which we will follow this evening and for the ninth meeting, the first thing we're going to do is we're taking up something called an invitation to bid, which the clerk will open here tonight and the council will vote on. And then we'll move to the public hearings. And there are a number of public hearings on tonight's agenda, so it may keep us here for a little while. There are sixteen. And then at the conclusion of that, we'll move to one consent agenda item, there's one item on the consent agenda which we'll vote on, and then we'll move directly to the regular agenda. And there are seventeen, eighteen items. They're on the regular agenda. We may have an add-on to make an appointment. If you've seen the printed doc, it will vote on all these matters in just the way they are numbered on the formal agenda. At the conclusion of the formal part of our meeting, that's all of the regular agenda items, public hearings, if any one of you would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, you'll be given that opportunity, and we'd be glad to hear from you. In order to have your name called, though, you must sign a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. So there are no ceremonial matters, so we'll move directly to the invitation to bid. Just, Alan, is that podium pushed back for a reason? Is it?
The TV.
The TV, okay. Okay.
Mr. President, would you like to take up the resolution of the closed meeting first, please?
Sure, okay, we'll do that.
A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
All right, thank you, Breck. The first item on the agenda, please.
The first item is receipt of bids pursuant to invitation to bid and notice of a public hearing scheduled for this day to accept bids for a long-term deed of lease with an initial term of six years for property located at 235 East Plume Street.
How many bids have been received?
One.
And please read the bid and market for identification.
Slover Library Foundation has submitted a bid in which they offered to lease the property for an initial term of six years at the base rent of $45,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions in the term sheet attached to the proposed ordinance. I've marked it for identification as Slover Library Foundation, February 11, 2014.
Thank you. Are there any additional bids offered? Okay, if there are no additional bids, I declare the bidding closed. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? And I see that Alton Robinson has signed up. Mr. Robinson, would you like to speak on this matter? Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Alton Robinson. My address is 735 West 35th Street. I'm not here as a opponent so much for this, or proponent for this particular bid, but I just had some questions as I was reading through it. And one of the questions that I had was, it says about the financial impact to the city, and it says, "The annual rent shall be paid to the city of Norfolk beginning on the rent commencement date as defined in the ordinance," and that's the financial impact. But as I read through it, certain things like the maintenance on page seven, under six paragraph B, I say, it said, "It should be the sole responsibility and obligation of the landlord," which would be the city, "with no cost to the tenant," which would be the bidder, "to keep or cause to be kept the premises, including, without limitation, foundation roof, building, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, HVAC system, utility lines providing service to the building or the premises, structural portions or the walls of the building, parking area, driveway, sidewalks, fencing, landscaped areas, and other common areas, good, in good order, repair and condition, ordinarily, ordinary wear and tear exposed and except for the damage there of, there too, due to the acts or omission of the landlord." And I understand that part as far as someone being a landlord who wanted to make sure that they take care of their property. But when it came on the utilities, services, insurances, and taxes, it says, "Utilities and other services landlord shall provide without charge to following utility services for the premises: heating, air conditioning, as conditions require, electricity, gas, water, sewer, pest control, and telephone service to the premises. The landlord should promptly pay when due all fees and charges incurred in connection." And I just was wondering, is this something that this city is going to be paying, all of these?
Let me try to take a stab at it. I'm also the president of the Slover Library Foundation, so I won't be voting on this matter tonight. Slover Library Foundation was founded for the sole purpose of raising money for the new central library for downtown. That would include the renovation of the Seaboard Building, which will be about half of the, of the central library, as well as the construction of the new building which you see on Plume Street. We've raised about $45 million for the city of Norfolk in that effort, okay? There are tax credits which we could be entitled to under certain IRS regulations of typically, you know, about $3 million, which we hope to gain another $2 million out of after we sell the tax credits. In order to do that, the city cannot apply for the tax credits. It must be a charitable foundation, which was the Slover Foundation. So what we, in order, we will rent the old building and the new building from the city at a cost of $45,000, which we will pay to the city, but it will be the city's central library. So the city will have the responsibility of paying for heating and cooling, those types of things. We will get the tax credits for the purpose of spending close to $500,000, $600,000 a year in maintaining the technology in the new library. That's what this new, that's where the tax credits will go. So this isn't an attempt to ask the city to pay for anything other than it's for a new, brand-new central library.
I understand, but I just thought it was just quite interesting that, the fact that the financial statement didn't mention that it would be a financial statement, I mean, the financial analysis didn't mention that it would be that cost that the taxpayers would be paying, all these utilities that I just mentioned. And also, I did read about the tax credits, and I was kind of wondering about them, that the person who bids would get those tax credits and that they would be able to sell them themselves. So if the, is the city going to get the tax credit or the?
The city will get the benefit of them, but the city cannot get the tax credits themselves.
See, I was reading, and I was just trying to find out where would the benefit come from?
Okay.
Where would the benefit come from if the bidder is going to be the one who's getting the tax credit because the city can't do it?
The foundation will sell the, will sell the credits.
Who are they going to sell them to?
We're going to sell them to individuals who want to buy the credits.
So how do they see the benefit from that?
Because the monies that come to the foundation will go to support the library.
And that's written?
Yes.
I didn't read it, that's why I asked about it.
Okay.
But thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are no other members of the public who wish to be heard, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a recommendation from city staff regarding the bids received from the Slover Library Foundation?
Yes, city staff recommends that the bid by Slover Library Foundation be accepted and the deed of lease be awarded to Slover Library Foundation.
Okay, will you read the proposed ordinance, please?
An ordinance accepting the bid submitted by Slover Library Foundation for a long-term deed of lease with a term of six years for property located at 235 East Plume Street, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
I have to abstain because I am the president of the Slover Library Foundation. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day under state law on the application of Chelsea Business Association to amend map LU1, future land use map in Plan Norfolk 2030, from residential mixed to commercial on premises numbered 816 Orpak Street and 1301 through 1307 Redgate Avenue, from industrial to residential mixed on premises numbered 701 Orpak's and 1300 to 1314 Bosavane Avenue, and from industrial to commercial on premises numbered 1311 through 1331 Redgate Avenue, 1210 to 1318 Raleigh Avenue, 1309 Raleigh Avenue, 1225 to 1309 Bosavane Avenue, 1222 to 1230 West Alney Road, 1225 to 1301 West Alney Road, 601 through 607, 701 through 715, and 801 Orpak Street, 508 and 804 Orpak Street, and 801 Claremont Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval on a seven-zero vote.
All right, there are no members of the public signed up to address the council on this matter, so if you call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to amend the city's general plan, Plan Norfolk 2030, so as to change the land use designation for various properties located along Orpak Street, Redgate Avenue, Bosavane Avenue, Raleigh Avenue, West Alney Road, and Claremont Avenue, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day on the application of the crossings at Campus Stella Station by the Franklin Johnston Group to amend map LU1, future land use map in Plan Norfolk 2030 from single-family traditional to residential mixed, to amend the zoning ordinance to add section 27-37, the cross at Campus Stella Station, residential plan development, and to change zoning from I-3 general industrial to PDR Campus Stella Station numbered 1050 Berkeley Avenue, extend it, and by seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right, there are three members of the public who have signed up to address the council on this matter. When I call your name, if you come to the podium, please, identify yourself for the record by giving us your full name and your present home address, and then please let me your remarks to them. Rob Beeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Rob Beeman, local land use attorney, 103 Bobby Jones Drive over in Portsmouth. I represent the applicant Franklin Johnston Group. Here with me today is Taylor Franklin, who's the CFO of Franklin Johnston Group. This is an application for a approximate 156-unit apartment complex on an industrial site over in the Campus Stella Heights neighborhood. It's currently a vacant site, used to be a lumberyard. Buildings are currently vacant. The city owns the property and has for several years. We've been working for about a year now with various affected city agencies in the, in the community to come up with a plan that incorporates a lot of input from a lot of different folks and really represents a, a good land use in this area. Like I said before, it's 156-unit apartment complex that would also include recreational facilities such as a pool and a clubhouse. But I think a really unique feature about this site is it would also include 25 single-family homes wrapped around the apartment complex. And this would function to serve as a really good transition or buffer between the existing homes in Campus Stella Heights and the apartment complex that's going to be right on Berkeley Avenue, right across the street from industrial uses in Chesapeake. So it really does not only serve the 25 single-family homes, serve as a good transition from the apartment complex to the existing homes, but the apartment complex itself serves as a very good buffer between the industrial uses in Chesapeake and the existing Campus Stella Heights neighborhood. The only other thing I'd like to highlight for you today is that this is a purchase from the city of Norfolk, and as such, the city of Norfolk has the opportunity to put certain restrictions in place under the contract, indeed restrictions, that normally the city wouldn't have an opportunity to for a development project. Here, the city has long-term maintenance and landscaping control over the property and can make sure that, you know, the applicant keeps the property up over years and years. And also, the, it's important that every single piece of, every single building that's constructed on the property, or any modification to any building, will have to come through the city design review process. So for all those reasons, we think it's a great fit in this corridor, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Beeman, the, the single-family homes were added because of discussions with the neighbors, right?
That's absolutely right.
So this was, from what I have seen in the almost four years I've been on council, that the request of the neighbors, when they met with the developer, the developer took it upon himself to make that change?
Yes, sir.
May cost him money, but still, he in turn made that change to accommodate the neighborhood that's around him and to be part of it.
Yes, sir, no, that's absolutely right, and it's.
That's probably the best part, regardless of everything else you've said is terrific. But that's probably the best part of this, is that you have a developer who listened to the neighbors and made that decision to, to accommodate them. That's probably at his own cost, but still to make a great project.
That's absolutely right, no. And, and this developer doesn't typically do single-family homes, so it does represent, I'm thinking outside the box and kind of going the extra mile to, to make sure this fits.
This is probably his first foray into single-family homes.
I believe you're right.
That I've heard since I've been here.
I believe you're right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Beatrice Garvin Thompson?
This is public hearing number two. Are you, it says public hearing two, but you're for something else, okay. And then, is it Janice Mokie? McKee?
Maggie.
Maggie, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. It, okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Janice McKee. That's okay. I live at 618 Walker Avenue. I am the resident, I am a part of the South Side Task Force, and as a organization that's supports and are the watchdogs for the South Side, it is because of our organization that the units were decreased from 220 units and over twenty, 25 single-family houses down to 25 single houses and 156 units. They also changed the name of the particular development, and we all were in agreement with that as well. I just want to make sure that if you all vote, which we agree, we agree for them to develop it, but it has to stay within those numbers, and before they start putting it up, because the plan is now going to look different than it looked when they introduced it to our community, they need to bring it back to the Civic League and to the coalition for approval. That's all I'm asking. That's why I'm here.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Ready, Mr. President?
Any other comments? Okay, call the roll.
I have three ordinances for this item. First is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan, Plan Norfolk 2030, so as to change the land use designation for properties generally bound on the south by Berkeley Avenue, extend it on the east by Todd Street, Cedar Street, and Oakfield Street, on the north by Joyce Street, and on the west by Hibby Street from single-family traditional to residential mixed, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance to amend chapter 27 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk 1992 so as to create the crossing at Campus Stella Station Residential Plan Development District, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And the third is an ordinance to rezone properties generally bound on the south by Berkeley Avenue, extend it on the east by Todd Street, Cedar Street, and Oakfield Street, on the north by Joyce Street, and on the west by Hibby Street from I-3 to PDR Campus Stella Station, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Yes. Just, I know this is the last vote on this, but for any developer that contacts me or I think sees how this council functions, the, the way this was handled is the most appropriate way, and probably the book could be written, when you have a developer who's doing what they're doing in this particular manner, that most likely could be to their detriment. They reduce density, they listen to the neighborhood, they even change the name to accommodate the neighborhood. And when a developer does that and comes to this city, it's a significant issue in the way that the, in the manner that it was handled. And I, I must commend council and, and Mr. Franklin, it's just a great job. You could write the book as to how this should occur. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I vote aye, and I just want to remind the mayor that that $2 million stays on the South Side.
I heard that, I heard that.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
I vote aye. Also would like to point out that he also agreed to our price, which is probably more than he wanted to pay. So Taylor, good luck out there, okay? All right, public hearing number three, what's it, three and four, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ms. President, the applicant for these two items has requested a continuance of February 25.
Okay. There are three people who are signed up. Is Mr. Glenn here? Okay, is, is there? And Dr. Carrie White is, I don't know, doctor, is, is here? The other person who signed up is Beatrice Garvin Thompson. The, the request is the matter be continued for two weeks, under, the letter at least said for the opportunity to talk, to spend some more time talking to the community about the project. We, this is the first time this has been on the agenda. We typically grant requests that are the first time on the agenda. I know this is a matter of some concern, seems to me like a couple of weeks might help the discussion, I, I don't know. Since, Ms. Garvin Thompson, you're the one person here who would, would you like to speak? Are, are you okay with the two weeks continuance?
We should be able to speak twice.
Sure, I mean, you can, I mean, I know you came down here tonight not knowing that it'd be continued, but if you'd like to say some things, and then we'll have you, certainly give you the chance to, to speak in two weeks.
All right. I'll go ahead and give my statement now for the record.
All right.
All right? And if things change for the, for the good, then, then all the better. Good evening, good evening, Mayor, council persons, and city administration. My name is Beatrice Garvin Thompson. I am a lifelong resident of the historic, significant Old Huntersville, and a chartered member of the Old Huntersville Civic League. Luna Development Application, if granted, I strongly feel will be both counter to the proactive restoration efforts of the community, and will fail to meet Luna's goal of providing predominantly low-income individuals and families a viable and stable environment that is needed to foster self-sufficiency and upward mobility. I'm certain that Luna, a for-profit developer and Virginia Supportive Housing and nonprofit developer of housing opportunity for our region's most vulnerable citizens in Norfolk, sought out this site because of its close proximity to downtown, its accessibility to public transportation, and probably for a variety of reasons because it is also accessible to mainstream services. The development of this property also will afford the city a tax-generated income while enhancing the Church Street corridor. But while this site does possess these attributes, I am wondering how much thought and serious consideration has been given to the ill health and depressing economic conditions that are prevalent in my community, and does this development have the potential of exasperating the problem? My neighborhood is laden with socioeconomic issues. We are suffering from high levels of unemployment and even pockets of extreme poverty. Our median income is below 40%, and the percentage of owner-occupied dwellers is 30%. Victimized by the broken window syndrome, Old Huntersville has one of the city's highest number of abandoned and dilapidated properties. We are constantly battling the perception of being an unsafe and uncivic-minded community. Even though I see merit in the project, my concerns give me reason to pause. Just the sheer scale and density of the project gives me pause. The merging of two high-risk communities give me pause. I'm concerned as to why the second SRO complex is being, is not being targeted to meet the service needs of those in the northernmost quadrant of our city. Developing on such a secluded parcel of land gives me pause. Having a single egress and ingress traffic pattern in and out of the complex gives me pause. But mostly, I am perplexed as to how an ailing community can adequately support a dense low-income project, and other than likewise, how can a dense, low-income tenant-based project support an ailing community? The Basic Principles of Community Economics 101 cites this as a worst practice. And from a community's perspective, instead of a win-win, I see this as being a lose-lose. Old Huntersville was identified as one of Norfolk's most depressed communities. Recently, we participated in the mayor's forum on neighborhood poverty reduction. The residents shared their vision and prescription for a healthy neighborhood, and that prescription did not include the introduction of multifamily units into the community as a viable option. The healthier and the more economically diverse the community, the better able the community is to support, attract, and retain its residents, thus creating a neighborhood of choice. Several years ago, with technical assistance from you, the city, the planning department, the residents of Old Huntersville began a grassroots effort that resulted in laying the cornerstones needed to resurrect our neighborhood. Our efforts resulted in changing our zoning designation, allowing only for single-family development. We are on a quest to continue that effort. Our plan is to return to you within the next few months to ask your support in the adoption, funding, and implementation of a self-directed, comprehensive neighborhood plan. In closing, as a resident, an activist, and, and community developer, I truly thank you for your consideration, your time and support in helping us to restore Old Huntersville back to its place of prominence and bring to fruition a safe and healthy and viable community for all of its residents, both present and future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the, the motion is to continue for two weeks, okay?
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Thank you, okay. Public hearing five?
Public hearing five scheduled for this day on the application of the city planning commission to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk 1992, Table 5A, to add recreational sports indoor as a use allowed by special exception within business and commerce park districts, and by seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
You can call the roll.
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain Table 5-A of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk 1992 in order to add recreational sports indoor as a use permitted by special exception in the BC-1 and BC-2 districts. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru? Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing six?
Public hearing six scheduled for this day on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 4 residential districts, to eliminate alternative standards for special exception uses within residential zoning districts. The Commission, by 7-0 vote, recommends approval. I have an ordinance to amend and reordain certain sections of Chapter 4 of the zoning ordinance so as to remove specific requirements for minimum lot area and minimum lot width for special exception uses in residential zoning districts. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing seven, please.
Public hearing seven scheduled for this day on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance, Section 12-3, expansion of non-conforming structures, 12-9, discontinuation of non-conforming uses, and 25-10.11, substantial renovation of a non-conforming structure or resumption of a non-conforming use in order to limit the availability of the special exception process by establishing additional compliance criteria. And by 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Call the roll.
And I have an ordinance to amend and reordain Sections 12-3 and 12-9, and repeal Section 25-10.11 of the zoning ordinance in order to limit the availability of the special exception process used to permit the substantial renovation of a non-conforming structure or the resumption of a non-conforming use by establishing additional eligibility criteria. Dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing seven, please.
Public hearing eight scheduled for this day on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance, Table 11-33-A, table of land uses to add pawn shop as a land use allowed by special exception within the PCO Five Points Overlay zoning district. And by 1-5 vote, Planning Commission recommends denial.
All right, there are no members of the public signed up to address the counsel on this matter, so if we don't have any comments, then you can call the roll.
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain Table 11-33-A of the zoning ordinance in order to allow pawn shop by special exception in the Five Points pedestrian commercial overlay district. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Protogiru?
No.
Mr. Riddick?
No.
Mr. Smigiel?
No.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing nine, please.
Public hearing eight scheduled for this day on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance, Table 11-33-A, table of land uses to add pawn shop as a land use allowed by special exception within the PCO Five Points Overlay zoning district. And by 1-5 vote, Planning Commission recommends denial.
All right, there are no members of the public signed up to address the counsel on this matter, so if we don't have any comments, then you can call the roll.
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain Table 11-33-A of the zoning ordinance in order to allow pawn shop by special exception in the Five Points pedestrian commercial overlay district. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Protogiru?
No.
Mr. Riddick?
No.
Mr. Smigiel?
No.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing ten.
Public hearing ten scheduled for this day to hear comments authorizing the sale to Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority of a certain parcel of property described as the east side of Reservoir Avenue acquired by the city pursuant to Section 58.1-3970.1 of the Code of Virginia for the sum of $13,000 and approving the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement.
Call the roll.
An ordinance repealing ordinance 44459 adopted December 13, 2011, and authorizing the sale to NRHA of a certain parcel of property described as the east side of Reservoir Avenue for the sum of $13,000 and approving the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
the sale to NRHA of a certain parcel of property described as the east side of Reservoir Avenue for the sum of $13,000 and approving the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing ten. I mean, 11, I'm sorry.
Public hearing 11 scheduled for this day to hear comments authorizing the sale to Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority of a certain parcel of property described as the east side of Maltby Avenue for the sum of $20,000 and approving the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement. And I have an ordinance repealing ordinance 44461 adopted December 13, 2011, and authorizing the sale to NRHA of a certain parcel of property described as the east side of Maltby Avenue for the sum of $20,000 and approving the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I vote aye. But have they said what they're going to do with this? Is this part of a building? Anybody know what they're going to do with it? With these two parcels?
Ron? No.
Okay. We'll get it later. Okay, vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing 12.
Public hearing 12 scheduled for this day to hear comments on an amendment to a lease with Philly D. LLC, D. Egg, for 204 Main Street, a property in the City of Norfolk. I have an ordinance approving an amendment to the lease agreement with Philly D. LLC for 204 Main Street, a property in the City of Norfolk. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing 13, please.
Public hearing 13 scheduled for this day to hear comments on approving a lease with Bon Secours DePaul Medical Center, Inc., for use of certain premises located at 7,300 Newport Avenue. And the ordinance approves a lease with Bon Secours DePaul Medical Center for certain premises located at 7,300 Newport Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia.
You call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing 14.
Public hearing 14 scheduled this day to hear comments on the conveyance of certain gem lots. We can treat these all together, Mr. President.
That'd be fine.
I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain parcels of property acquired by the city pursuant to the Code of Virginia and approving terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement to Eric Cooper, 1720 Todd Street, Zishan Hamid, west side of Mini Avenue, Vasukone, 1255 Hanson Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinances and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. All right, now the consent agenda. There's only one item. C1, please.
Approve the consent agenda. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R1, the regular agenda. R1.
Mr. President, the applicant has asked the matter to be continued to February 25.
All right, there's no one here to address the counsel on this matter. This has been, actually, I think this was the administration's request that this matter be continued for a couple of weeks, and they've agreed to it, so.
The applicant.
Okay.
What was the reason given?
To continue to work out.
The traffic.
With the city, yes. Oh, okay.
There's a transportation improvement that was requested by the applicant after the approval of a planning commission, so we need additional time to understand and analyze the options for that.
All right, call the roll. Motion is to continue for two weeks now, please.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2.
A resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to accept certain additional city streets for municipal assistance payments and to remove certain streets from the eligible list pursuant to Section 33.1-41.1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase from Anita E. Urquhart of certain property located in the City of Norfolk, known, numbered, and designated as 1224 Cary Avenue for the sum of $10,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the attached purchase and sale agreement, and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $15,000 from funds heretofore appropriated to pay the purchase price and other transaction costs. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. We, R4.
An ordinance appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of an additional amount up to $2,330,516 from the Commonwealth of Virginia for inclusion of the Fiscal Year 2014 Comprehensive Services Act for at-risk youth and families pool fund, and authorizing the expenditure of an additional amount of $890,981 in local matching funds from the Department of Human Services for the Fiscal Year 2014.
Ellis James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Ken Lake Place here in the City of Norfolk. Members of the council, my good city manager, Mr. Jones. I think it's important for those of us who are taxpayers here to occasionally put into the record our support for certain areas that are extremely, well, they are at best much needed at this moment in our city's history. And I think this particular funding request and so on, addressing the at-risk youth and the Families Pool Fund is certainly worthy of our support, and I would like to indicate that today. Thank you very much. I hope that each of you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Philip Hawkins?
Mayor Frame, members of council, Vice Mayor Williams, City Manager Marcus Jones. My name is Philip Hawkins, Jr. I reside at 3597 Mississippi Avenue. And I just wanted to know, in terms of the expenditures, I am, first of all, I would like to say I am in support of this as well. I just wanted more clarification. When it says families, does that also include seniors, senior citizens? I guess they get some of the expenditures or the spending of that money.
Mr. Hawkins, I don't think so.
You don't?
Maybe the manager can address that. We can give you.
Or for, like, tax relief. That's what I'm specifically addressing, that part, because I know that comes under human services, and just wanted to know.
No, that's not.
Does not?
No.
Okay. So I will be bringing in a new item later at the meeting that will pertain to senior tax relief.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5.
An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $20,000 from Smart Beginnings Southampton Roads and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant funds and $180,000 in local cash matching funds for fiscal year 2014 for the Smart Beginnings program to increase public awareness of the importance of early education, to sponsor early learning centers, to assist early learning centers and family home providers undergo the Quality Rating Improvement System, and support early learning programs and Small Business Development Center, and to provide scholarships for the Tidewater Community College Early Education Program as part of the Smart Beginnings program.
Second. Alton Robinson?
Good evening, Mayor Frame, city council. My name is Alton Robinson. My address is 735 West 35th Street. I am for early childhood education because I know that a good education is to predict the quality of life, and the earlier that a child begins, the better they'll be off and the more that they'll be able to achieve their goals when they get into elementary school, middle school, and high school. But the thing that puzzles me is the $180,000 matching with the $20,000. So I began to start trying to do some research on Smart Beginnings, and I found out that they had somewhat of a connection with the Hampton Roads Foundation. And I was just trying to be interested in the people that was involved in these things. And so I was like, I hope it doesn't bring about any type of conflict interest deal where people could say something bad about people on our council, because as I began to run across the names of the people that, because I tried to find out who the board members were for the Smart Beginnings, but somehow that site wouldn't come up for two weeks. Still couldn't get the information. So I looked into the Hampton Roads Foundation boards, and I seen that a lot of the campaign contributors of these people on this board contributed to a lot of the members on council. And I thought that was quite interesting, that, you know, the members on council have to vote on this particular item to give $180,000 matching with a $20,000 grant. And I say, well, I don't want anybody to say anything bad about my council members because I know my council members wouldn't do anything, you know, that would be morally or politically uncouth, one might say, being that a lot, and I mean a lot, of the names of the people were contributors, large sums of monies. But I'm not going to call anybody's name because I don't like to put people on the spot. But I just want to know that since we are getting $180,000 of taxpayers' money versus the $20 grant matching, let us be careful of the list of the names of people who are campaign contributors who also may benefit as being board members of these organizations, nonprofits. You know, like the mayor screwed himself for, you know, not voting on that other issue. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Betsy Powell, were you going to speak on this matter, Ms. Powell?
Only if you have any questions about it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. You call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R6.
An ordinance establishing the federal asset forfeiture revenue account, accepting from the U.S. Department of Justice Asset Forfeiture and Money Laundering Section, an equitable sharing program fund award of $95,000, more or less, as federal forfeiture asset funds, appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds for law enforcement purposes in accordance with the terms and conditions of the attached equitable sharing agreement and certification. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R7.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Bodin Oil Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of $4,955.81 based upon overpayment of business personal property tax for 2013. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R8.
An ordinance authorizing the reissuance and remarketing of the City of Norfolk, Virginia General Obligation Variable Rate Demand Bonds, Series 2007, and the replacement of or amendment to certain financing documents related thereto.
Dan Montague?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Mr. Jones, my name is Dan Montague. I live at 4605 Creek Street here in the City of Norfolk. I'm all for this. I hope you guys are able to refinance everything you want to refinance, and in doing so, I hope that you restore the senior citizens' tax relief, because people like me need it. And also, I want you to forgive the deferments that you put in place this year, and, I mean, this last year. Ms. Williams is the only one that voted right when you guys took away the tax relief for the seniors. Most of the people here in this audience right now came down here about senior citizens' tax relief, and the thing about it is, we need it. Most of us, we get by, but the thing about it is, if anything drastic comes up, we can't do it. And so therefore, I want the senior citizens' tax relief restored and amended, so it is the best one, and I want it done this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.